Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Please begin recording. The time is now five thirty-three. Good evening and welcome everyone to the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. I am Zakiya Goins-McHans, Committee Chair and District Eight Board Member. Thank you all for joining us today. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Ms. McMillan, please call the roll.
Ms. Goins-McHans?
Present.
Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Dr. Moss? Mr. Jackson? We have three present.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. With the quorum present, the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting will come to order. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting agenda. There being no objections, the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted. Moving on to one point four, if there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. There being no corrections, the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes are approved. Um, next, we would move on to public comment, but there are no registered public comment speakers. So we will move to our Chief Financial Officer Updates. We have one item for discussion. Each member will have two rounds per item during the discussion, and each round will be two and a half minutes. If a third round is required, a vote will be taken. So the Chair recognizes Ms. Smith, Director of Budget and Management Services, for the budget update.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to share my screen. Can you guys see?
Yes, you can see.
You can see it, okay. Okay. All right. Well, good evening. My name is Von Smith, and I am the Director of Budget and Management Services for Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, in this evening, I'm going to give a brief update on where we are in the budget development process and what the next steps will be. So now that we finalized the Board of Education requested budget for FY twenty-six, we've transmitted it to the county, and we are currently in the process of developing the requested budget book. We can now shift our focus to school operating resources. Um, so the school budget planning is being finalized as we speak. Um, this includes the minimum school funding, calculations, school-based locked allocations, and centrally managed locked allocations, all which determine the funding allocated to each school. Um, just so you know, when it comes to school-based staffing, there are three categories of resources. We have our unlocked, locked, and locked-plus positions. So unlocked positions are those positions that can be purchased using allocated SBB funds. Schools can determine the composition and mix as needed. Then there's locked positions, and those are the positions and resources that are funded and staffed by Central Office. Those positions typically have special requirements or restricted funding. Like, for example, School A receives special education staff. Those are teachers, paras, secretaries, based on staffing policies and procedures of the Special Education Department. And then our locked-plus positions are positions and resources that are funded and staffed by the Central Office. And these schools can supplement existing allocations, um, using their SBB dollars. So, for example, a Central Office provides all schools with point-five library-media specialist position to, let's just say, in this case, elementary school A. That school A may then decide to purchase an additional point-five library-media specialist position to make it a full one-point-oh FTE. So this slide is going to break down, um, what our school-based budgeting is going to look like, and this is new. This is different than how it has been in prior years to some extent. Um, so as you know, you hear it all the time. Eligible enrollment determines how much funding is allocated to each individual school. Foundation is the base funding provided for each eligible student. For our principals during this year's SBB, they will see their revenue based on the characteristics of their students for each blueprint program. That's new. This represents the total school allocation. Next, principals will see their school-based locked funding allocated to their schools. So direct school-based resources reflect the detailed budgets at the school cost center level, including the non-public schools, which serve our students with disabilities. And then there are centrally managed locked funding allocated to our schools. Centrally managed school-based resources are in direct support of schools, but the budget is managed centrally on behalf of schools. This would include our nurse, our school nurses and psychologists, academic interventions, summer school, textbooks, academic coaches, safety and security personnel, building maintenance and custodial staff, transportation, just to name a few. The total school revenue less the school-based and centrally managed locked funding will provide each school with their net allocation. The schools in turn will use this allocated funding, that net funding, to build out their school budget, and they get to determine which positions and discretionary resources are needed to best support the students populated at their schools. PGCPS is required to report on the allocation and execution of these school-level resources monthly, demonstrating compliance with statute five-two-three-four of the blueprint legislation. In aggregate, direct and centrally managed school-based resources make up approximately eighty-six percent of the unrestricted operating budget. Now, this slide may look familiar. You've probably seen it multiple, multiple times before. It's just a reminder that the minimum school funding statute requires PGCPS to distribute the prescribed percentage of the per-pupil amounts for each applicable program multiplied by the eligible school enrollment to each school, or at least to each school's cost center. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys are tracking. These are the different programs, and we have very clear instructions of how much of that per-pupil amount needs to get allocated to our schools. And then the final stage of the budget development process is a reconciliation or approved cycle. There's a lot that has to be done during this cycle. We finalize staffing and SBB. We will receive the final state aid funding that will indicate final revenue totals as well as the final state and local share of blueprint funding, and we will see the county's approved budget. Everything will need to be reconciled and finalized in time to present to the board the approved FY twenty-six balanced budget in June, transmit it to the county, and ultimately certify it with the state. So there is a lot that has to get done between now and the end of June before the fiscal year starts. Um, and myself, our Chief Financial Officer, and the entire Budget Office, we are working feverishly to try to make sure that, you know, we are tracking everything that needs to be done, um, that we are working diligently to get this budget book out, um, in a timely fashion to get SBB kicked off and get our principals starting on their budgets in a timely fashion, um, while at the same time really monitoring what's going on at the state level, county level, and the federal level, and how that may have an impact to our budget, understanding that a lot of adjustments may have to be made last minute depending on where we finally land in final revenue dollars. So with that being said, that really concludes my update. Um, so if you have any questions, please feel free.
Board members, do we have any questions? Vice Chair Brown?
Uh, thank you so much, Chair Goins-McHans. Can you go back, Ms. Smith, to, I think it's slide four?
Sure. Is it this one?
Yes, that's what I wanted to. And can you explain, I don't know if you explained P, um, per pupil? Yeah. Can you, can you say what that acronym is just for, obviously, um, people who will be watching this and maybe people who will be watching this later?
Absolutely. So PPA is our per-pupil amount. So for every program, there is a prescribed per-pupil amount that is indicated in the actual blueprint legislation. We don't set it. It is set on, for us, for every LEA. We all have the same per-pupil amounts. Seventy-five percent of that per-pupil amount, which is a, is a set amount of funding that will be provided for every eligible student, you know, so for student A, foundation, that amount, we call the per-pupil amount. Um, and you multiply that by the total number of students, and you have to do it for each school. Um, so you have your foundation amount, compensatory education amount, English learners amount, special education, and so on and so forth. But PPA is per-pupil amount.
Thank you. And then I'm, I'm looking at, um, the pre-K public providers versus the a hundred percent of the PPA pre-K private providers. Can you kind of also explain the difference between the two?
Yes. So they're both publicly funded, but our private providers, we are just a pass-through entity. It, it is paid directly to those private providers. Um, whereas our pre-K public providers, those are our schools that provide pre-K. Um, so one is, and there, there's different, there's different rules and associations with whether it's a public provider or a private provider, even though they're both publicly funded. Um, but we have to make sure that for our public providers, that we are allocating funding in accordance, the seventy-five, at minimum, is seventy-five percent. It could be more. Um, whereas a hundred percent of our private provider funding for pre-K goes to the private provider. It's, we're just a straight pass-through entity.
Thank you.
I just have, well, I should say just, a few questions about the timeline for this. I know you said it's coming up, but I saw in maybe two slides before this, it says March slash April, and then the slide immediately before this one or after this one, it says that we'll finalize staffing. So what is the time when principals will get these numbers and their budgets to work on? And then, you know, so that they have time to actually start hiring the staff that they are picking?
Yes. So SBB will kick off the end of this month, the end of March. They will, they do, they do something we call clinics, where we'll walk them through the tool. There's a tool that they use to formulate their budgets. Um, so when I say they'll see, it's, it's in the, we call it Apex, it's in the Apex tool. They will kind of get a tutorial training on how to utilize the tool, what changes were made since last year, especially for our new principals. That's going to happen at the, starting the very end of this month. April seventh is the go-live date from where, um, all the changes to the tool should be complete. It should be tested and ready, uh, for our participants to actually go in and actually formulate their budget. That's April seventh. So that's early April. That they'll do their school. But in the meantime, there's also staffing changes that's happened. There are staffing changes that are happening now, right, in fiscal year twenty-five that we have to take into consideration, um, in FY twenty-six. So there are snapshots and reconciliations that have to constantly happen, whether it's on the Central Office side or whether it's on the school-based side, um, just to make sure that our FY twenty-six budget is reflecting the most realistic picture. Um, so that would be in eight, around the April timeframe where we can finalize staffing. That includes school-based budgeting. Um, May and early June is the Budget Office's opportunity to start really working on reconciliation. Um, because we also have to think about, funding is based on eligible enrollment, but we still have to make sure that we have enough to cover our students, whether they, whether we received funding or not for it. So there has to also be a reconciliation between eligible enrollment and projected enrollment, and where adjustments need to be made. So that's in, that's in May.
Thank you so much. I see, um, Board Vice Chair Briggs' hands raised.
Thank you, Chair Goins-McHans. Uh, and apologies, I have to be off camera, um, for personal reasons. But, Ms. Smith, I really quickly wanted to ask, because we're, um, the Board and myself have been receiving emails from various charter schools about the per-pupil funding and how, under the new blueprint formula, um, certain charter schools would actually be slated to get less than a typical school. Can you just speak more to that?
Yes. So we are still in the process of, and I understand that they're frustrated, but we're still in the process of trying to sort through all of that. Um, I believe there is a meeting tomorrow. Um, but we are working feverishly to try to figure out what that's going to look like for our charters. Um, there are certain nuances to charter schools, um, versus our non-charter schools. So I don't know if they're, what their per-pupil amount is going to be overall, um, for FY twenty-six. Whether it's going to be higher, lower, it just really depends on the characteristics of their students. It depends on blueprint legislation. And there has been a, um, there's been a judgment on what that looks like, and we have to bring in OGC just to make sure that we understand what that means for us and for the charter schools. So there's a lot that still has to happen in the next couple of, I would say, days, um, in order to provide the charters with what they're asking for.
Okay. And then just as a Board Member, if you could just kind of clarify, I know you kind of get the inner workings of it, but like, who are these, um, different, um, parties that are involved with, like, kind of shaping this, this plan? I know you mentioned that OGC was one.
Yes, and there's a charter office, the Prince George's County Public Schools Charter Office, um, as well as the CFO, the Budget Office, um, and then, of course, the operators.
I see. Okay. Okay. And, um, and, and I want to clarify, because I know you're probably tracking through the government relations team, what's happening in Annapolis with, um, some of the updates to the, to the blueprint law. Um, if those changes do, you know, get voted on and come about, are you all, I mean, I know that, um, uh, that Chief Howe is tracking some of these things. So is that in the projected budget as far as, like, for charters as well, anticipated cuts?
Potentially, potentially. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Um, it would impact all our schools, every school.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we're moving to our second round now. If there are no objections, and Ms. McMillan, can you just start the time over again? Because I want to give Director Smith an opportunity to expand on that, if there was anything else other than just the yes, and also talk about how, with those things kind of being in limbo, they are, our deadlines, our internal deadlines for schools to get that information are going to be impacted when it comes to our charter schools, or if they are.
Yes. So our thought, and we're still trying to flush all this out, because the impacts to what's going on, um, with the General Assembly as well as with the federal government really could have major impacts to our, our budget, our revenue. And so as a result, you know, we're still trying to figure, you know, we have to hit this timeline. We just can't wait on decisions, the final decisions to be made. So there may have to be adjustments on the backend. And we are going to, we're trying our hardest to figure out what that could be and what that could look like, um, now with our projections and, but because it's all in limbo, we just don't have the concrete answers. Um, and we don't know how much, because there could be a portion. You know, there's a lot sitting at the General Assembly, and we don't know how much of that is going to be an impact specifically to PGCPS. Some of it, you know, may impact the county, which then could also impact us. Um, but it would not just be our charters. It would be all schools, potentially. Um, but we will have, um, reconcili, during the reconciliation phase, that there may have to be some adjustments made. Um, but our goal is always to try to have as little impact as possible to our schools and our scholars, um, but understanding that, you know, as much as we possibly can.
Um, and for the last little bit of time, just for clarity's sake, the goal is to get all of the charter school, um, legislation and all that work done so that our charters can get their budget projections and all of that at the same time as our other schools?
Yes, they're a part of the SBB process to some extent, yes. So they're on the exact same timeline.
Thank you so much, Director Smith. Vice Chair Briggs?
Yeah, thank you, um, and appreciate the round too. So, um, Director Smith, I, I did want to just kind of like, uh, kind of hone in a bit more on the charter piece, because I would love to get clarity around how this process works. I'll be quite honest with you. I'm normally a person who's, will do my own research and kind of understand these things, but there's a thousand things at this point that Board Members have to know, so I'm not gonna, so I'm really going to rely on you to hopefully kind of clarify. Um, but, you know, charter schools have stated that there's, like, administrative costs that they are, um, that PGCPS has control over, the percent that they would have to cover versus the district. Can you clarify, is that the case, when you all are thinking about this kind of, um, you know, budget and whether there are significant cuts, and of course, the reconciliation process and figuring out what the new budget would look like? Where does that fit in as far as, like, the two percent versus, I think, the five percent for the charters?
Yes. So typically, there's a two percent admin fee, um, that's imposed on charter schools. Um, however, just when we do it, so there are certain services that PGCPS provides to charters. Um, you know, because their, their employees are our employees, you know what I mean? Those are our students, our employees. So there are certain costs that, you know, or services that we provide to charters that are mandatory, that they can't opt out of. However, because of blueprint and how blueprint legislation kind of lays certain things out, um, and there is a ruling, um, but it's not fully clear. Charter schools, the operators are concerned that when we say at minimum seventy-five percent needs to be allocated, allocated to the school, their concern is that there will be a twenty-five percent withhold to charter schools. Um, and so that's what they're pressing on, and that's their biggest concern. However, they're not understanding that there are centrally managed costs that directly support the charter school. There are some things that they can opt out of, to say, well, we don't, we don't want your, you know, your academic, you know, we don't want your textbooks. We don't want your, you know, that would then increase their allocation. Um, but overall, the two percent admin fee, does it really cover everything that the school system is providing to the charters? And I think that was what was visited, um, in the past, that it may increase to five percent. But at this point, with blueprint, I don't even know if admin fee is relative.
Is relevant?
It's relevant, thank you.
And, okay, so got it. And the nine, so and I think it was, like, historically, it was like ninety-nine percent for charters versus now you're saying, uh, no, no less than seventy-five percent, of course. So, okay, I would love to maybe just have an offline conversation, because I just want to make sure I can be supportive with whatever it is you all are doing and just understand it, so then when charters reach out to us as Board Members, we can, you know, um, um, intelligently communicate what's going on, so that it's, you know, it's helping you all out too, I think, in the process.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Smith. Moving on to, well, should I ask, does anyone else have any more questions before we move on? I know Board Member Brown didn't get a second round. Great. We are going to now move on to item four-point-oh, our Chief Operating Officer Updates. So the Chair recognizes Dr. Coleman, Chief Operations Officer, Officer for the Transportation Action Plan, Hub Stops Update.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Board Committee Chair Goins-McHans, members of the Board and community stakeholders. Uh, as the, as the Board and the public is likely aware, our school district has committed to engaging in an ongoing, multi-year improvement process around our transportation system. This process began last school year with the completion of a third-party audit by an independent transportation firm called Formative. The audit produced twelve recommendations, five of which we began implementing across the school district this school year with the goal of improving overall transportation service. As we continue to refine the implementation of the first five prioritized recommendations, we are simultaneously planning areas of continued improvement going into year two. Tonight, we want to talk about two areas of improvement that will be implemented in school year twenty-five, twenty-six. I should say, beginning in school year twenty-five, twenty-six. Specifically, the establishment of hub stops to support, uh, some specialty programs, and revisiting the parent app used to communicate the bus location and status for parents. I would like to introduce, uh, the Director of Transportation and Central Garage, Mr. Kiba Baldwin, who provided information on these two topics. Uh, Director Baldwin?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, and good evening, Board Chair Goins-McHans and other Board Members. I would like to share my screen for the presentation. And is everybody able to see that? Great. Thank you. So this presentation is meant to give an overview of our plans to address two topics that have impacted our operation daily, um, as Dr. Coleman has mentioned. So we've been able to share critical updates on the progress of our Transportation Action Plan. While we're seeing operational improvement, we still face challenges that contribute to our later rivals. We shared these concerns early in the school year in August. Uh, today, we're still battling some of these challenges. So we're sharing another operational improvement to help offset staffing challenges that we face daily. We turn our attention to our specialty programs. Many of our youngest scholars, including those in our immersion programs at Dora Kennedy, Philistine Williams, Overlook, Moangelo, are experiencing long commute times. Some boarding, uh, as early as seven, or seven o'clock for nine-thirty school start time. Long travel times not only impact the student well-being and readiness to learn, but also create our operational inefficiencies. Um, drivers to these trips are often underutilized due to the ride time of their trips. We say underutilized, as most drivers have three trips in the morning, three trips in the afternoon. These drivers basically have one trip in the morning and potentially two to three trips in the afternoon. Our goal is to have most, if not all of our drivers, to be fully utilized across all three tiers. To address this, we are proposing the establishment of hub stops with the Prince George's County Parks and Rec Department utilizing their facilities. By centralizing some of our pickup locations, we can optimize our bus stops, improve driver utilization, uh, enhance accessibility for our parents as well. This shift will increase efficiency, reduce student ride times, and maximize our transportation resources. So the benefits of this collaboration with Prince George's County, Prince George's County Parks and Recreation, um, deal with efficiency, equity, safety, and collaboration. The implementation plan components related to this, uh, project include site selection, making sure the Parks and Rec locations are at a convenience, um, are conveniently located for our parents, the logistics coordination, determining what routes, uh, what facilities, uh, some of the parameters for parents, um, to drop students off and pick students up at those locations. Uh, the third factor is our parent communication. Very important to inform families what the plan is and how best communication will be done, uh, to them by transportation and through our schools. And finally, a pilot evaluation. Uh, this would be a pilot project, um, with the expectation that we could, uh, make it scalable and apply it to other specialty programs. We're on a shift to our parent app. Uh within the parent app, we wanna recognize our challenges. And we hear you. So we're actively searching for a new parent app that better meets the needs of our families and reflects the reality of our operations. We understand the frustration with inconsistent updates and inaccurate. We understand the frustration with the inaccurate updates, the inaccurate bus locations, especially as our team navigates staffing challenges and works to cover all of our vacant trips. In those moments, our app may not work, will may not always provide real-time accuracy, leading to confusion for our parents. We found out that the user requirements to fully access and utilize the app have been difficult for our families. So because of this, we're taking a proactive approach um to engage with our IT team conducting a parent survey and gathering direct input on what families need and would want in a parent app. This feedback will guide our search and ensure that the next system is more reliable, more accessible, and more user-friendly. We will be sharing a timeline with you outlining these steps, as now we are still in the beginning stages of our research. Some of our deliverables that we're looking to share uh will be a report to um as we get the feedback from our parents, we wanna uh be able to share out what our families are saying and 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 their desires. We want to implement a again, uh we wanna be able to implement a prototype to be able to test this appropriately. Uh, we wanna be able to uh make sure that we have an adequate training and communication plan set. We want to increase uh in terms of our short-term outcomes, we wanna be able to increase our parent satisfaction with the app. We want to show improved accuracy with the timeliness of the bus tracking features of the app. Some of our long-term outcomes here are just enhance our communications, reduce transportation-related complaints and confusion. This concludes our my presentation, and now I will open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. So we had these divided up into two separate, so thank you for bringing it to us um altogether in one presentation. For that, board members, if there are no objections, think we can just automatically say we'll have three rounds, and then if we need more, we'll come back for a fourth one. And then we'll start with Board Member Brown.
Okay, thank you so much, uh Chair Jorgens McCants, and thank you so much um to Mr. Baldwin, and I mean, you guys, thank you for listening, because that means a lot to us as PGCP's parents. Um, I, as you all know the history of me, I've been a PGCP's parent since twenty-fourteen. And this app, Stop Finder, has not been um as successful as we would have liked it to be. Um, and so to hear that you all are taking steps to get something that is uh more reliable, uh more accurate, I am kudos to you all, and I truly appreciate the work that you're putting in. Um, I did um have a couple of questions, so I'm gonna ask my first question. Um, have you all contacted other districts, even nationwide, to see what apps they use that have been somewhat successful? Uh, because when I saw the word prototype, I kinda got nervous, cuz I'm like, are we gonna reinvent the wheel? If a wheel already works, um and so that that I think that was one of the questions that I had. Um, and of course, um what what the budget looks like around that, because um I'm sure there may be an increase or there may be a decrease. So can you, can you talk about that? Think, please?
Yes, ma'am, I can. That's a a great, great feedback, great questions that you have, and and very relative. So number one, uh that was one task that we did not wanna do. We did not wanna reinvent the wheel. And so it it also ties in with our routing system. So just being able to have parents track the bus is just one simple outcome um that that we have a lot of um inner working parts to to be able to produce that product to you. And that deals with substitution of our buses, uh it deals with the number of staff that we have daily for operations. And so we wanna be able to give you a system, to find a system that ties in to what we have to do every day to cover a run. And and I will, we would categor- categorize it into three areas. Uh if the driver's not here, then my team has opportunities to either uh double a run, that means we're gonna drop off some students and go back out and get them. We can combine two runs together, so they're gonna, they may have an extended ride time because they're picking up two trips.
Can you restart the timer, and then uh Director Baldwin can have uh my two and a half minutes to finish answering the question?
And the third one is splitting the trip, and and this is where what we found using the current app um is not productive, because once our team has to split a trip, and that means they're gonna divide the stops among multiple buses, we lose that capability of tracking the bus. And and because of 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 our staffing challenges, that has been an option that we've had to do. And so we wanna be able to find the next app that accommodates, that that can accommodate what our reality is and trying to cover the runs.
And so
And Director, if I could add to the question or the response, uh yes, Board Member Brown, we are researching actively uh the different parent app and routing systems that are available uh and have been in communication with a number of systems that are large like ours uh and can handle the complexities uh that a Prince George's County Public Schools uh presents from a transportation perspective.
Thank you both so much. Vice Chair Briggs?
Great, thank you so much, uh Chair Jorgens McCants. So, Mr. Baldwin, I wanted to, I want, one, I wanna echo the um the um appreciation for you know, looking into the the Stop Finder app and replacing it. I think it's necessary, and I think it just will be helpful for you all. I mean, it doesn't, you know, if we get over fifty percent of the call saying that they don't, it doesn't work, then it, you know, that's a sign that we probably should change it. So that's um appreciate that you all are looking into that. I actually released a survey, and this is probably the most response that I've gotten over the last two and a half years that I've been a board member. It was seventy-one people who responded to the survey about transportation. And a significant amount, I wanna say it was definitely over sixty percent, were saying that they were you know, having kind of consistently late issues with buses, or the Stop Finder app was a big issue. Um, and so I I guess as we're moving into solving this problem, I mean, I think this is gonna be really, you know, good for you all, is like what are the 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 users, right? The people who are most impacted by these these things just to kind of solve those problems, so you can get on to the other really important work. Um, hearing their voices and hearing what it is that they're experiencing, so that they, so that you know what the next thing is, that we would be really helpful to kind of uh solve those problems. Um, the other thing I was gonna say was that I think you are already have this in your line of sight, but um, you know, with the new administration, with the, you know, federal agencies shutting down or closing, and then there are people who are being called into the office. Um, and so I've just hearing from a lot of pa- uh families saying they don't have the flexibility that they had at one point. They're having to step down from PTAs, they're having to, you know, get out earlier, they don't have the kind of flexibility to see if their child, if the bus arrives on time or not. Um, and so there are a lot of things there too, and and what I'm hearing is that so many are like, I'm probably gonna be like fighting for a before-care, after-care slot for my child, because you know, these are things, so I just don't wanna wave of like unexpected things to come you all's way, um when I think this is like enough runway to kind of just be anticipating that. And I'm sure that's already, you know, on your radar, but just wanted to mention that and see if you had anything you wanted to share about that.
Well, that's a good, I mean, that's a good point. Uh, we've been talking about that, and that's one of the reasons why uh the collaboration with the Maryland Parks and Recreation and their facilities with our hub stops. Uh, we are looking to provide our opportunity to help provide safe havens. So if parents have to drop students off a little earlier uh to provide a safe haven space for them to wait, as well as to be picked up. And as we've been talking with the Parks and Recreation Department, uh it has been um an exciting conversation, because they have received that very well. Uh, we are looking forward to partnering with them and providing a service for our families, and it just, you know, we started this conversation before the new administration took place, and it just seems to fit right now. And and so we want to make sure that uh we 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 s- we're able to set up a quality system uh for our families, because now it's more important more than uh any time now. So I appreciate you bringing that question up, and and it is on our our own, our sites.
Thank you.
I have, um, well, several questions, but on the well, this one, I guess, applies to both of them. So you all have here for us, and thank you so much for being responsive to um our parents and community members about the frustrations with this app and transportation in general. I see like short-term outcomes and long-term outcomes, and then outputs and deliverables, but those don't seem to be tied to each other. So how soon would be, we be looking at having a new app? And then how soon would be, would we be looking at implementing these new hub stops?
Right. So, great question. So right now, we are uh we've been in the beginning stages right now. We're in the research, and we are uh kind of confirming those steps. So as I've shared those outputs uh and those expectations, that's on a general overview. We're gonna streamline that more as the research comes in, and we're able to get the fine and more definite path. We will come back to you with a timeline. All of this, right now, tentatively, is due to start the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. There are a lot of things that must uh be completed prior to that. Uh, we wanna be able to notify families of this plan prior to ending the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So folks have an idea of what to expect coming into the new year. And we wanna be able to provide some opportunities to um talk with our schools, PTAs, and bring them on board early enough that it's not um something brand new on day one.
And Director, while we have a moment, uh we didn't uh follow up on Board Member Brown's question around the budget, so if we have just a moment, can you just touch that?
Right. So right now, the um the cost of our routing system, GPS systems um is taken in kind with our bus camera system. So there's a minimum amount of funding needed to cover the routing uh and our GPS systems that we currently use.
Was that the end of the state? Cuz I know our time is about to run out for that particular part of the brown round, but was that the end of the statement, or did you have more to add?
That was in the statement, I'm sorry.
No problem. Board members, do we have any more questions? Board Member Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Um, the other question that I did have, I was thinking of a question from a constituent that I had in District Five, who really was concerned about the training for the bus drivers in learning a new system or learning how to use the GPS system within. Um, do you guys, I didn't see it in the presentation, and I'm I'm sure it's gonna happen, but um are you guys thinking about obviously doing a training for the bus drivers for this one? Is there gonna be a new way? Because I I would hear that they had iPads on the bus, but sometimes the iPads were powered off, and some some um bus drivers just didn't know how to use it properly. Um, and so um did you guys consider possibly doing a more in-depth training once this is rolled out?
Absolutely. Uh, we, if if we move forward the way we've been talking about and kind of strategizing, it will have a comprehensive training plan, uh not only uh something that we do as a first time, it will be a a continuous improvements cycle. So we will instruct, we will have a chance to monitor and provide feedback on a continual basis. The technology is going to, the technology is changing the scope of transportation. And we are needing to elevate the knowledge level of our folks to um have capacity to operate in that manner. And so we're gonna have to take a little different approach uh with our with our transportation staff as far as training on the use of the tablets. Um, a lot of it is just a a circumference level right now. If folks are not used to the technology, then they're not gonna use it. And we have to be able to uh build capacity and and get, basically get folks comfortable of using the technology in order to increase the knowledge base from that standpoint. So, yes, ma'am, there there will be a comprehensive plan for training.
Thank you. I have another question, but I can wait for.
I think unless um Board Member Briggs has another question, I think that means we will technically be on ru- round three. So you can ask your question.
Perfect, thank you so much. So my last question is about the hub stops. Um, is there, is it gonna be additional costs to the families, number one? And will the kids be able to be inside of the facilities on, let's say, days that are maybe cold or hot? Um, what does staffing look like to ensure that, you know, if kids are able to be inside, they're gonna be safe inside. If they have to be staying outside, you know, are they gonna be warm? So I think that's always a concern for for parents as well.
Absolutely, great question. So those are all components that we are currently talking with our partners about. Um, we're making it known that we wanna provide a safe haven, so that means we want our kids to be inside, and we want them to be supervised. So we're working on uh a a cost structure that right now uh it would not be a cost. But if parents wanted to extend time, then that may be a cost to them, um in terms of if if you wanna think about the concept of before and after care program. From that standpoint, but we are very early into that conversation. But it is one of our talking points with the Parks and Recreation to define, to be able to share with our families.
Yeah, and I just wanna draw a fine point on that. Um, the the staffing implications for park and planning uh could could uh could be serious, right? Uh, where they need additional staff in order to support the number of children who may be available at the hub stops. And so we have to explore what that looks like, um uh and what resources may need to come to bear from our perspective and from park and planning in order to make that component work. Uh, so that that is an excellent question, because, you know, we have to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah. We uh, we've done some preliminary work based on um current students and their locations to the nearest recreation facilities. And some of the route planning, we've been able to, right now, just, this is just roughhousing it, but reduced the ride time almost by sixty minutes. So that's significant, and if we can sustain that um and in terms of making that from, taking it from a plan to an actual, that will be uh something very good for our system.
And and the last thing that I, if I could say, I know we're out of time, but um I don't want perfect to be the enemy of progress. And so our children catch the bus outside right now, like every day. And so if we can, uh let's say we aren't able to come up with the right arrangement from a a funding perspective with our partners at Park and Planning to make it work that they can upstaff and we can bring them inside. If we can still have the students outside at a space where we know adults are are adjacent to them and cut significant time off of the routes, then that may be what we call progress as opposed to the perfect scenario. So everything is on the table, and that's why this is a pilot.
Yes, excellent. Thank you so much.
Um, my one question for this. Um, my one question for this round, cause I think I might have counted the rounds uh wrong. But in that vein of it being a pilot, is this a pilot specifically for these schools that are mentioned? Or is there some sort of, I guess, larger plan to see if hub stops work and then expand it? Or is it just to see if hub stops work for these buildings and whether or not we wanna keep it going forward?
Great, great question. So right now, the pilot is for these schools and we're looking to duplicate. So if this is successful, we would want to duplicate it for other specialty programs as well.
And Director Baldwin, if you could just take a moment to talk about why we selected the specialty programs as a part of that third tier, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, yes, exactly. So the schools that were selected are all on that third tier, um all but one. One is an eight-thirty school. So it kinda ti- chimes in perfectly with the pilot. The second part is these immersion programs have some of the largest boundaries in the district. So you think about Affilacy Williams, they're going back, they they've been at Robert Goddard, and now they're going back to their location on Harriet Truman. Their boundaries extends all the way to Laurel. And we have buses coming from Laurel to Harriet Truman. And so being able to have an opportunity to have a hub stop in Laurel area to reduce the number of stops is significant if we can do that and have those kids transported within an hour back to P E Williams. So um if, again, these are some of our um and and these boundaries for these schools, they have a lot of uh outlier outlining areas where there's only one student. And and then they may be at the tip of the boundary. And so we're going all the way out for one student and come back. So this is why that this hub kinda works as a uh intermediary between us and parents. And if we can find a a a common ground to get kids there in a safe area and be able to reduce that ride time, that's significant. Uh, we wanna, we wanna get them there so that we're ready to learn.
Thank you all so much for these updates. This is really exciting. And I think similar to what um Vice Chair Briggs said, I think we have a lot more questions and things that we might want to ask later, just so that we are aware of what's happening and can properly relay that information. Um, but I see that we have our next item on the agenda and we did uh slightly exceed our three rounds. Tonight, uh, the chair recognizes Dr. Coleman again, this time for our capital improvement programs update on the Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you again, Board Committee Chair Goins McCants, uh, members of the board and members of the community. Uh, the Educational Facilities Master Plan, or EFMP, must be submitted annually to the state of Maryland and lays the foundation for the subsequent Capital Improvement Plan or CIP. Tonight, we have members of the Department of Capital Programs here to renew our Board of Education and Community Engagement around the EFMP to analyze, discuss, and set the ju- the priorities that will be reflected in the document and that will ultimately guide the CIP. Joining us is Director Shayla Jackson and Fiscal Supervisor, Mr. Ricardo Smith. And I see that Miss, our Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, Mr. Jason Washington, has joined us as well to discuss the timeline and prioritization process for the C, for the EFMP. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Jackson.
All right, good evening. Let me share my screen here. That work? Alright, so um, thank you for the invitation to come today and begin our conversations around the next phases of our master plan development. So I was asked to very briefly touch on the timeline and the prioritizations as a primer for a fuller conversation next month. So I provided the presentation that will be our starting point in that future meeting, but for now, gonna limit myself to walking through just two of the slides today um that will really set us up for that future conversation. And we're gonna skip past all of the actual numbers and goodies in here. But starting with the timeline, uh, it's pretty simple. I'm just gonna draw your attention to a couple of highlights. Um, we're currently slogging through what we'll call the old or the FY seventeen EFMP. And we call it that because the study for it started in twenty fourteen and it was finally adopted by the board as the FY seventeen EFMP around twenty sixteen. So that means the data behind it is eleven years old. And in the case of the facility conditions, it's fifteen-year-old data. And our space standards have changed, our goals have expanded, our building deterioration has definitely expedited just just by age alone. So following the blue markers here, you can see how we progress to the next EFMP. Starting again with the master educational specification process, so we can decide as a system um what what we believe makes a school building work programmatically and evaluate each facility in our inventory against these standards to prioritize um their their improvement, their renovation, their replacement in a way that promotes equity in offering as well as in condition. At about that same time, you see that next blue line, we're launching the condition assessment portion of the FY twenty-seven EFMP Development Project. Um, you know, we're sending our, an engineering team, architectural team into the buildings to access the systems in real time, to look at the roofs in real time and to help really give us that valuable facility condition update data. By January twenty twenty-six, if you follow the next blue marker, no, I guess I said, uh, yeah, there is. January twenty twenty-six, you should start to see us presenting raw data to the board. So it might be, this is how the facility condition indexes look. These are the worst schools by condition. These are the worst schools though by educational adequacy, or maybe it's utilization data. We just start to talk and have those conversations where we're seeing where we have the worst overcapacity or where undercapacity is an issue, maybe. Um, and some of our other newer pillars, we'll see about energy use in in that very like data-specific way. By August twenty twenty-six, though, we should be starting to firm up into actual recommendations around priority issues, around consolidations, um around maybe at least a division into cycles, if not a firm priority order. And that's when we really start to broadly present to our communities until June twenty twenty-seven, which is around when we should be adopting the brand-new EFMP that would guide PG CPS for the following decade. But of course, bureaucracy does not pause for advancement. So the yellow markers are just to remind you that we still must submit an annual EFMP while we're developing an EFMP. So in June twenty twenty-five, we'll still vote on an amendment to that original FY seventeen EFMP and we'll do it again in June twenty twenty-six. And we do have some work to do in those amendments that I'm gonna go ahead and preview now from the end of this presentation. Ten like you didn't see these things. You've seen most of them. These are the numbers. Oh, they look so delicious to me, but we're just gonna keep going today. Okay. Um, and this is the kind of stuff we'll be talking about. Hold on, I have to move you guys, cause you're in front of the words. Okay. So in the immediate term, as the um sorry, in the immediate term for the FY seventeen EFMP, this is where it still has work to do. We have to decide what, how to address the shortfalls. For example, William Schmidt, um New International High School, there's a funding shortfall that we need to discuss in a prioritization conversation against the funding issues that we we didn't discuss, but that you know of. We likewise need a resolution for our Southern Elementary consolidation. Um, if you can recall the conversation about those from maybe October and December, there was quite a few that were in Cycle One, but they were paused um by a board vote in twenty seventeen. So we're really seeing now those facilities are just falling into disrepair. Um, and we need to consider addressing them beyond a repair or beyond an operating budget shift, but really with the wrecking ball. So um, when we look at that in the prioritization conversation with the full budget um next month, you'll be able to see kind of looking back even just a few years ago, getting an elementary school in there uh was a much easier lift than it is right now. So we'll need to kind of discuss that holistically, like what it means for our priority order. We also have some new issues that the FY seventeen EFMP needs to address before it's done. And that's things like the Brandywine over enrollment issue that probably won't wait for the next master plan. And then at the same time, while we're finishing Cycle One, um the FY twenty-seven EFMP will continue. So we'll be discussing the Ed specs and maybe in this particular committee, it's an opportunity to really kind of zero in on that budgetary side. Um, because if our Ed specs are really like an unvetted or undisciplined wish list, then we can't afford to build the related schools. Because we then hand those Ed specs to every hired architect and we say, design this, this is our standard. We send them to the state, to M S D E, and we say, hold it, hold us to this with like ten percent either way. Um, so that becomes our way of standardizing and ensuring that there's equity in construction. And as we talked about, of course, we judge and prioritize modernization against these Ed specs. So there's definitely a a financial component to them. Um, the other pillars also require support from this committee in particular and our stakeholders at large. And I'm definitely looking hard at that consolidation piece here um for the capital budget, but also for the operating budget and also for the school-based budget implications. And finally, our global community involvement approach, just so we can all together kind of educate on these really like data-driven, data-informed decisions, advocate and of course speak with one voice. And with that, I suppose I am done with our preliminary conversation.
Would you mind, or are you pausing here? Are you gonna go back and explain the slides we skipped over?
Well, I was told that today was just a preliminary conversation to talk about the timeline, but I would, if there's time, I can go through the numbers.
That would be, I think that would be really helpful for our constituents, but I want to.
I will do the shorter version.
Other board members. Vice Chair Brown, are you okay with?
Yeah, I I can't wait. Uh, I can yield my question till um she goes over the numbers, that's fine.
Okay. So, well, since we're just doing prioritization really quickly, just a reminder, the FY seventeen EFMP was founded on three foundational pillars, facility condition, educational adequacy, utilization. And we've talked about facility condition, you know, it's the part that you can see, the educational adequacy is how the building actually works as a school. We've talked about utilization over and under enrollment. Um, and then when we've positioned ourselves to discuss the FY twenty-seven EFMP, we've talked about adding pillars and um so that includes the blueprint requirements. Universal pre-K has to be addressed in the master plan, CTE expansion. And then other system initiatives from sustainability to changes in security standards and protocols. Uh, these is a familiar conversation in the sense that we talk about the FY seventeen EFMP and all EFMPs can be a very, or it's not cost neutral, the word is like a cost-blind exercise. Because you're looking at a portfolio of buildings and you're saying like, what is the most responsible way um to modernize and what is the priority order of any responsible modernization? And so ours actually would come to cost five hundred and seventy million dollars a year in current dollars. Um, and that that again is just to modernize according to the FY seventeen EFMP. Our actual average capital approved from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-five is a hundred and seventy-four million, so we've always been short. And then, you know, we have these uh current economic realities that have us closer to a hundred and twenty-eight million last year. And this is just another way to look at the numbers. I can't see the total. Let me see if I can shift. And this is really just to emphasize the fact that even though we never achieved the five hundred and seventy million dollars a year, um, just the current fiscal reality uh and that like nationally is that costs have gone up and available capital funding has gone down. And then this is just a different way to discuss prioritization. Because so we're talking about, yes, we have the EFMP and that's what order do we build new schools, new additions? What order do we modernize or renovate? But then the job of the CIP is to go request the money, right? Um, and then the CIP also has other work that it has to do. So if you look at the FY twenty-three CIP, and this is what was approved, we requested two hundred and sixty-six million and we received two hundred and five million. That's like a, it's a banner year, it's a great year. Um, what that meant inside that CIP is that sixty-six percent of our approved funds went to new schools, additions or modernizations. That's a hundred and thirty-six million dollars. Thirty-eight million went to system upgrades. And that year, those were really big HVAC projects. That's what we did at James Madison. That's what we did at Putuxin. Um, lar- large-scale projects still. And then thirty-three million went to major repairs. This is anything from bathroom partitions, new playgrounds, ADA lifts, parking lot repavements. And then if you look at last year, we requested two hundred and fifteen million and we received, I'm gonna say one thirty-five million here. That does include a healthy schools grant. But eighty-six percent of that, or a hundred and seven million, went to new schools. It was lower, cause it's a, it's a lower total, right? But it's a big percentage of that capital budget. And system upgrades was just fourteen million or eleven percent. And major repairs went from that kind of thirty-three million dollar number, which was, which was really high even in that year, but down to just three point six million. And that is not enough to address the emergencies that major repair is required to address. This is also not enough to sustain, um even in the bigger system upgrades category, uh adequate roof replacement program or window and door replacement program just to really secure our buildings, our envelopes, um just for straight water leaks. Um, so it's it's another prioritization piece. Like we, yes, we have to do a master plan prioritization piece, but we also need to think about how to gather together around the work to figure out what percentage though goes to our master plan and then how do we also maintain what we have? And then this is where we talked about some of the work of both the FY seventeen EFMP as we try to close out Cycle One and as we try to develop the FY twenty-seven EFMP. I'm gonna try questions again.
Thank you so much, Jackson. Vice Chair Brown?
Yes, thank you so much um to Ms. Jackson and um your team and to um Mr. Washington. They both came to my coffee and conversations and my constituents keep emailing about how great you all did and they feel like they have a better understanding when it comes to capital improvement now. Um, they saw the big picture and they saw the budget and understood a lot more. Um, and so thank you so much for coming out on Saturday and explaining. I wish more people fully understood what capital improvement and was about and the deficit that we're in. Uh, but I also wanna point at that, point out that there are board members right now who have been fighting in Annapolis today for um, you know, more money when it comes to the construction of our schools. So this is all a team effort and we really appreciate, I I'm gonna try to get more constituents to fight for you all as well. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that I pointed um pointed that out. Um, I saw the three categories. It was new schools, system upgrades and major repairs. And it seemed as though uh major repairs, in my opinion, just from my eyes and from what I know, major repairs would need more money. So I'm like, who decides, right? How is it decided where it's like major repairs gets less money than system upgrades? Cause I, the system upgrades was kind of confusing for me, but when I think about repairs, I'm like, well, I would think we would need more money, but I I'm sure you guys think about the budget prior and and things like that. So I kind of wanted to get just a little bit of information on that.
That's a good question. So, oh, okay. The the first part is usually for the capital budget. This is as it happens in the CIP process. Um, we do, we do put our requests together. We prioritize and funding approval usually prioritizes the new schools, right? Anything that's in construction is gonna get the first bite of our approved dollars. So it is appropriate for that to go to the new schools and modernizations. Like the years where I've seen us really falter on that, all we're doing is pushing the bucket down into the operating budget into future major repairs, because a lot of those buildings just needed to be replaced. The system upgrades, I I think I have roof repair, roof replacements in that category. And that's a place where we need to um be spending like thirty-seven million dollars a year based on the size of our inventory. So some years we were able to execute a roof replacement program and then you'll you'll hear crickets from us for a
One second, Director Jackson. Ms. McMillan, can you just start the timer again? Thank you.
Uh, my memory does not work that well, you guys. Um, it was about roofs.
So roofs are in system upgrades?
Yeah, I mean, I put roofs in system upgrades, but a lot of years we don't get funding for roofs. So you'll see like um we pause, the idea is like at two hundred buildings with our age uh, ten years ago, if we had been doing ten a year, we probably would have kept up, but now it's Uh, uh, ten years ago, if we had been doing ten a year, we probably would have kept up, but now it's a makeup. We need to do like fifteen a year, so I do have those in there. I also have larger HVAC projects and the thought behind those. Was a good thought. When I first started here, we were doing a lot of Band-Aid projects. We would just. Do a boiler here or um fan coil units in the classrooms. And those were very unsatisfactory in the sense that like they didn't really improve heating and cooling. You put in a new boiler and all the systems downstream leaked. There were more steam leaks with the new boiler and it just created more problems, so yes. You should change the HVAC and you should do it holistically and you should. Get the windows while you're there and if you can the roofs, but the thing is by the time you've done all that. You're gonna touch about five systems. You're also gonna do fire alarms. You're also gonna do sprinklers. And then you probably had to move. The students and then you should have made educational improvements to the classroom because you're not coming back because look at how much you improve facility condition. And now it's a limited renovation and so it is very um. It's expensive and it should be subject kind of to that master planning prioritization process, so they're good, they're good projects. They're very much needed projects. Then just to finally get to your answer for major repairs. Those first two categories, if they're doing their work and they're well funded, they absolutely reduce the amount of need. In major repairs, I think it's just how far from a deficit that we're working. We also mirror our building services department. Those are a lot of maintenance projects in major repairs, so we should never be the only source. Of major repair funds. We definitely want a healthier budget than three point six million dollars. I. Personally like to hold some of that. That is our emergency money. If building services doesn't have the money to fix something that is going very wrong very quickly. That is always a great pot of money. I poured it like. Like a dragon because it it has less restrictions because it is supposed to be major emergency repairs. So I I definitely agree. I would love to see more money there, but. I just wanted to note that we sometimes are hesitant to ask for it there because we know if we don't do the first two categories. It gets shafted and then it always doesn't, usually doesn't get approved at higher levels either.
And I got four seconds, but I wanted to say this. My son sent me a text. On the day that you all came to the coffee and conversation, he says, mom, three point five million on an HVAC replacement? Question mark exclamation point, and so. Yes, it's a lot of money and so uh but again, thank you so much for for clarifying it and I do definitely think. That we need more money when it comes to repairs, but hopefully we can get some more money. When it comes to the modernization of these schools, so thank you.
Can you tell us where we are in the? C I P cycle, like when this gets approved, when you all. Put in the requests for the new um fiscal year, where are we?
Yes, there was a a slide that I I'm just gonna go back to it really quickly. Because. It would make me feel good, like this is Obafa. I just updated you on the C I P. Free of charge. Here we go. The F Y twenty six is right here at the bottom. It has all those asterisks next to it because it's it's just preliminary recommendations, which right now are about three point. Certain thirty four point three million from this state. Um, if you look at the numbers above it, it does look like it's quite a bit lower, but it's missing some of the grants um. And like emergency growth money that will probably be added to it. It'll probably hit around forty five million. Ninety four million is the preliminary recommendation from the Office of Management and Budget, noting that it hasn't gone to the county council or county executive yet. And so the that's about where the current total that one twenty eight, um, that's where it is right. Now, the next steps for it is to go before council to be appropriated, um, and then we get access to it in July. And then like basically the very next day, we're presenting to you the C I P again. So the C I P usually presents um in. This is historically true. We're gonna try to edit this a bit this year, but historically it has presented in August. Was first reader and second reader in September, submitted to state and county in October. The E F M P then has been presented in the spring. Voted on second reader by June, submitted to M S T E and Department of Planning, July first. And then we just keep going and then the C I P again and then the E F M P. We're gonna try to combine them some so that there's some fiscal conversations in the E F M P. Um. We'll we'll see how it goes.
Thank you so much, Director Jackson. Board members, I believe that puts us now on second round. We have. Any additional questions? Um, yes, um, I Cindy and then we'll go to our second round. Excuse me, Ms. Adley.
Hi. Hi, thank you. I do have one question for Ms. Jackson. Did you say that the um documents are gonna go to first and second reader at the board meeting?
I just noted what they have historically done. I think changed our reader system, right?
All right, so I just wanted to correct that quickly. We no longer have first and second reader. So with the board meeting, all the items are approved as a consent agenda. So it's gonna be approved with all other documents unless. The board chooses to send it back for additional information.
Thank you so much for that clarification, Ms. Adley. Board member Brown?
Yes, I just thank you so much. Um. Chair Joyce McCants, I wanted to ask you one more question. You said Ed specs. Can you explain what Ed specs is?
With pleasure, so the educational specifications are something we do. Specifically for every school that we build or construct, but. The master educational specifications, and I should note that they're required by the state um. For new construction and any project, I think where we're improving like a certain program spaces. But the point of master educational specifications or prototype educational specifications is for a system to come together and think like. In general, for elementary schools, like noting that some will have. A specialty program that will require additional spaces, but what should our core spaces include? Do we do media libraries? What kind of specialty art spaces do we believe should be standard? What should? The cafeteria include and high schools, it might, you know, get a little deeper. Do we include an auditorium? Is that standard an auxiliary gym? And we meet with the entirety of like our academic partners and some school based staff and we kind of go through in a very like. Laborious, but very detailed way, not just like. It's not just a list, though. It's like if it's barbering and cosmetology, it's X amount of chairs, it's a locker space, it's this space for the teacher, so we have a square footage number too. And so when I said that the state will hold it to us like ten percent either way. When you go to build that classroom space, you have to be ten percent of the square footage as you said you needed, you know, a little smaller or a little bigger is okay. But for the point of a master plan, it's really helpful because you're gonna go evaluate the buildings beyond condition, so. When we talk about, you know, we know what a bad condition is, but you can be in great condition and be a really poor school. Due to a poor educational adequacy score, which means when we scored you against everything we said a school should have of your kind. You you just kind of failed across the board. Your parking lot configuration wasn't safe, your hallway configuration wasn't good, you didn't have any. Maybe bathrooms in your pre K classrooms, things, things like that, that we are seeing are quarter our program delivery.
Thank you so much, uh, Director Jackson. Board member Brown was at the end of that question. Um, the only thing I wanted to know, we are, this is our last for this round. I don't see the timer. Um, in this. As we're going through this and we are talking with the communities. We as board members, we get a lot of questions about how this is different than our operating budget and. How these decisions are. How this is different from operating budget, how these decisions are made? What is our role and then what is your role? I know this is a little bit of an aside from that, but could you please clarify like where those budget recommendations numbers? Came from, like when you're asking county council, this is how much we would like for our C I P, where those numbers came from.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the difference between the operating budget and the capital budget, so. It's like, can't tell you for sure. I know the operating budget is based on revenue. I don't know all the sources. I saw that long laundry list of things, but for capital. It's definitely almost all just bond sales, so we are very much debt financed. And one of the places we talked about at the um coffee and conversations was a lot of community members wanted to know kind of like. How we're tied to the operating budget or how we're tied. Sort of to the economic picture that they know is happening, and so for me, I think the best example has been. Um, you know, like in our personal finances. When our income goes down, the amount of debt we can be approved for. Goes down as well, and that's what we're experiencing in the capital world, so. Prince George's County has a triple A. Bond rating, we're not willing to take on more debt to jeopardize that. To me, that's like we have eight hundred and fifty credits score. We don't want to hear about debt exceeding. Our income levels and so when I hear a lot of things that are happening in just broadly economically. That's how it's affecting the capital budget, so. When they're, when I'm saying those are the O M B recommendations from the Office of Management and Budget, that's what they're looking at. They're looking at. Not so much our priorities, they're just looking at how many bonds do I have to sell and what can we afford to sell within those parameters and based on where they know the revenues are? And then I think after that it goes to the stakeholders and they're looking more at the schools. In their areas or, you know, whatever the stakeholders are interested in. So that's the part that we're at now and then we'll go. There'll be the council hearings. Um, with the public and and it'll be a part where they come in and do their feedback and we get to a final. I honestly haven't seen too many shifts after the O M B recommendation in my tenure, though.
And just to back up, the the primary operating budget uh dollars come from student enrollment. So there's a formula that the state provides that the more students you have in your system based on a certain formula. That turns into money to support the operating needs of that particular student or system.
And and I will say, you know, to the point of your question of like. How are how are projects generated within that budget? Is really driving off of the E F M P and the priorities laid forth by D C P, so so that. We're given a number by O M B. This this is our target number and then we then look at and and uh Director Jackson just said. Any current construction projects like that we have, they take priority. How much is needed this next year? Then we move to the next priority issue there, then we move down, so that's how the allocation. Is because a lot of the construction projects. There's a state match based upon a certain amount of local funds as well, so that's kind of. The staircase of priorities that come together and then that's what is presented. To the board in August, what what Director Jackson was saying, that that's. That that the 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 C I P plan, our plan to spend whatever that budgeted amount is from O M B. And then that's what is presented uh to start that whole C I P process.
Thank you so much. I know we are technically over time with our rounds, but. Were there any additional questions, board members? So I do not have a seeing none. I do not have a additional question, just a request. Could we get, and by we I mean the board, a copy of that presentation so that we can share it with other constituents as well? Like across the county or maybe we can have a conversation about creating one and putting it somewhere. On the website or somewhere where people can have access to it.
Yes, that can be provided.
Thank you. Um. This is our last agenda item. So. Um, there being no further business. The chair informs the public that the next virtual operations, budget and fiscal affairs committee meeting will be on April thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Thank you all so much for coming and presenting this and. Um, answering all of our sometimes very nitpicky questions. We want to make sure that. Our constituents and everyone is watching is informed as well as for us to be informed. Um, so thank you all so much for that. Uh, there be no further business. The time is now six fifty seven P M and the March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Operations, Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting is adjourned.